Good evening. I want to call the Maryville Town Council Meeting for Tuesday, August 28th, 2018, to order. It is exactly 6:30, which we ask that you please stand for the invocation by Pastor Bob from Impact Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Our gracious Father, we thank you tonight that we can gather in this room and conduct the affairs of this community. Father, again, my prayers for everybody in this room, especially those that head this room, that should fill them with wisdom and knowledge, and, Father, the compassion and mercy that will help them be the leaders effective for our community. We pray also, Father, for our children who have started a new school here. Father, not only that they'll be safe, but that they will continue to grow as Jesus did in wisdom and stature in favor with God and man. We thank you for the protection of this community, for those who have that responsibility. We give you thanks, Lord, in Jesus' name.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we have roll call, we would like to also at this time remember Senator John McCain and family in his passing. We ask that we keep that family in our prayers. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Here.
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 Labarka's under the weather. Present. We have six present. We have a quorum. Petitions, communications, and remonstrations, Mr. Lake.
I just gave you something. You didn't open it up.
This is the Councilman Richard L. Hardaway from the office of Peter J. Wiskowski, Congressman. It gives me great pleasure to congratulate the town of Maryville upon being recognized by the Arbor Day Foundation as the 2017 Tree City USA Community. I applaud you and the Maryville residents for your efforts to improve the environment and the quality of life in Maryville. This award is a testament to Maryville's hard work and dedication to build a stronger community through conservation of our natural resources. Once again, congratulations. Sincerely, Peter J. Wiskowski.
A large gathering permit for the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. This is Shai.
Food Bank of Northwest Indiana was part of a ride the region and mobile market place event on Saturday, September 1st, 2018, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. The purpose of this event is to distribute quality food to families in the community and to raise awareness and funds for the hunger relief. There will be approximately 700 people who will attend throughout the day. There will be two dumpsters, ten waste haulers, and adequate toilet facilities. They are, there will, there are approximately 300 parking spaces with an additional parking in the rear of the property. No alcoholic beverages will be served, and all the Maryville police officer will provide security.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Minchuck that we approve large gathering permit for the Food Bank of Northwest Indiana. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. I'd like to mention that the month of September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. We were able to do our proclamation with the county last week. And along those same lines, I would like to thank the whole town personnel as we attended the back-to-school event for MIS. It was a great time. I met with the superintendent today, and everybody was very pleased with our turnout. And our employees are to be commended, not only from the police and fire, but also clerk treasures office courts, building and planning, town administration, and code enforcement. We appreciate everybody that was out there. Thank everybody for their attendance. Very happy kids and happy parents, too. And at this time, Mr. Guernsey, I'll turn it over to you.
And just to give us some word, too. Years ago, if you've been in Maryville, you've been driving down Broadway, you used to see Nummy Junkyard, they always looked terrible. Now, it's a parks, used park store. Have you ever been in there? You walk in, it's spotless. And I, and we have Paul Shaver, you'll come up, is, I guess your father owned it? Well, you own it someday, though. Thank you, Dad, and I think you guys keep that place up. We hope the state claims it always is.
Okay. Any other petitions, communications? Seeing none. Consent agenda, council payable registered voucher for August 24th, along with the approval of Town Council meeting minutes for August 14th.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Spann that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
Just for everybody to keep an eye out for the next town newsletter, the mailer should have our lead schedule on there.
Thank you. Uh, council affairs, anybody have anything on the council affairs? Councilwoman Labarka. Personnel policy, employee benefits, Councilwoman Barron.
No report.
Public safety, Councilwoman Usalak.
Yes, I have a question, which should probably go to the attorney. Joe, maybe you could advise us on that or give me your opinion. About a month ago, three or four weeks ago, we had two murders in the Broadmore Country Club Apartments. You remember that? And then, before that, we had a murder on the east side of Broadway in an apartment complex. I am wondering if there is any way where we could mandate these buildings to put up security lights in their parking lot?
The problem is, is that when you go to implement an ordinance or a resolution, you need to do it prospectively. If you try to do it retrospectively, you run into problems. So what you can do is you can pass an ordinance like we did with the business camera ordinance, where we can encourage existing businesses to install the cameras, but any new business coming into the area would be mandated to install the cameras, or if not, face stiff penalties and fines. So we can go ahead and we can work on an ordinance similar to the business camera ordinance about, you know, lighting and so on, but we can't, we can't have it go retrospectively. We can have it only go prospectively, but with an encouragement to all businesses that they have proper lighting. So if that's something that you'd like me to work on?
Yeah, I would really like for you to look into it, maybe even security cameras. Would that be possible?
Security, actually, we've already done the business security camera ordinance that's in effect, so any new businesses coming in, they have to install the security cameras. A perfect example of an existing business that, you know, might have needed a security camera was the recent incident at one of our local churches where a priest was assaulted and abused.
St. Michael's.
St. Michael's. So if we would have had security cameras there, potentially, it could have led to a quicker investigation of the factors going on there. But with, you know, Councilman Minchuck suggesting that and implementing that, we've encouraged existing businesses to do it, but we've definitely mandated to all future businesses coming in that you must do this. So we can certainly do it on a, on a lighting end, too.
That involve the apartment complexes?
We can, we can, we can specifically, we can look at specifically tailoring it to, you know, certain, certain commercial aspects, and that's something that we definitely need to discuss, but at the end of the day, you know, we're all about public health, safety, and welfare in the town.
Correct.
So if it's going to improve the quality of life for people here, I think we're all about listening and definitely weighing in on it.
Well, I think we should look into it. Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Excuse me. I had one thing. Over the weekend, on Friday, August 24th, our police department participated in a DUI checkpoint that the state regulates. We had a checkpoint set up at this, in front of Broadway Glass between hours of 10 and 2. The officers were able to make five operating well-intoxiated arrests, made a total of 59 citations, 15 misdemeanor arrests, and one felony arrest, and a total of 20 vehicles that were impounded for one reason or another, and that is the driving suspended prior. The officers did an outstanding job. They also assisted with traffic control by our volunteers, EMA, and it went off smoothly. We had additional, six other departments assist us in this DUI checkpoint.
Good.
And it was governed over the area that we had a battalion last year on Broadway. And we had a DUI battalion at Broadway. Construction worker was struck by a drunk driver hitting northbound on Broadway, ran a man over last year when he was beat. Construction worker putting up road detour signs, so, and that's why he chose a second.
That's great. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Anything else on the public safety? Okay, parks and rec, no one's here from that? Anybody else have anything on the parks?
I do. I'd like to make a motion that the Town Council President be granted authority by this Town Council to enter into a purchase agreement pursuant to IC 36-1-10.5 for the following parcels. 6700 Broadway, fifty, or 66, oh, I'm sorry, 6700 Broadway, 66 Washington Street, and 66 Broadway, and 6535 Madison Street.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we appro, I think there's an additional part of the motion, though.
I didn't. It's that any offer to purchase shall be contended upon the council appropriations of the funds for the purchase and immediately engage Environmental Solutions Group, Inc., to provide a purchase, one environmental study on the above-mentioned parcels in the amount not to exceed, um, one, 1,700. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 1,700.
If I might interject, this is, this is a purchase agreement to acquire the rest of the land at the YNW Theater. So this is giving us approval to enter, we already passed a resolution to go ahead and start that process. This is just a motion giving us approval to enter into a purchase agreement with the current owners of that approximately 28 acres that's still available.
Who are the current owners?
It's called Tri-X.
It's a trust corporation?
Tri-X Development Company, LLC.
Trust Corporation. Okay.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, is your second still good?
Second stand.
By Councilman Pettit that we approve authorizing the Town Council President to sign an agreement for the purchase of property at 6,400, 6,600.
There's, there's four, there's actually six parcels involved with multiple addresses, but also an important part of that is, we're also going to do phase one environmental testing on the property to make sure that the property is non-contaminated.
That's important. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Anything else on the parks?
Yes. Route 30 and Whitcomb Street, we have a new park coming in, which is moving along, and new equipment is being put in. The old equipment was torn down, and it is an added site for Route 30 and Whitcomb Street. Thank you.
Anything else on the parks?
Real quick, Mr. President, sorry to interrupt this. I wish Jan was here today. I wanted to thank her. About two meetings ago, I asked her to take a look at the concrete divider wall, Stefan Park, and she threw a fresh corner of paint up there, it looks really nice, so just wanted to record it. She did a really good job, and thank you for it.
Okay. Anything else on the parks? Okay, seeing none. Environmental affairs, Councilwoman Barron.
I have no report. Matt, do you have anything?
Only that we were reranked as a Class 7 under the FEMA Community Rating System program, which still makes us the best ranked in the state of Indiana, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Matt, got a phone call from someone in Chapel Manor. They're very appreciative of the work done on the ditch through Chapel Manor and Forest Hills.
Thanks.
Do you know who the phone call was from?
Yeah.
It's a pretty important phone call.
And we'll, we'll continue on with that work as well. And I also have NIPSCO meeting them tomorrow because they're going to be trimming a primary line that runs along the ditch that our contractor couldn't get at some of those trees, so we'll look at that tomorrow and they'll do that work for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the environmental affairs? Elections, public relations, Councilwoman Usalak.
No report.
Environmental development, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President, there, uh, we have a bit of a snag here procedurally, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to table that application for the PUD amendment. I've been in contact with legal counsel, but we need to straighten that out for the developer.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Barron that we table the application for plat amendment for plan unit development for Brookstone Estates, Phase 2. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, gentlemen. Utility liaison, Councilman Spann.
No report, but I'd like to say something about the trees that they're cutting by the power lines, by the tracks on 61st. They've done a good job, but they've left some wood there, so I'm waiting to see if they're going to come back and get it, but they've done several of those large cotton woods, so they're doing a lot of work. I don't know how far down they're going to go.
Okay. That's NIPSCO doing that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah. Well, okay. All right. Anything else?
Give me the rest.
Okay. Seeing none. Abandoned properties, that's me, no report. That concludes committee reports. General orders. First reading ordinance, ordinance 10-18-18, the ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the cumulative capital improvement fund for the 28, for the year 2018, not included in the current budget. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Minchuck, second by Councilwoman Barron that we approve ordinance 18-18 on first reading. Any discussion? Roll call.
Spann?
Yeah. Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries six to zero. That concludes first reading ordinance, and second reading ordinance, ordinance 18-17, the ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of a general obligation bond for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of the bonds, appropriating the proceeds thereof and all matters related to.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilwoman Barron, approve ordinance 18-17 on second reading. Any discussion? Because this is the second reading ordinance, we have to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on ordinance 18-17? Any public comment on ordinance 18-17? Any public comment on ordinance 18-17? Roll call.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. That concludes second reading ordinance. Resolutions, Resolution 18-20, a resolution authorizing the disposal of certain real, real estate property, real estate and all matters thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilwoman Usalak that we approve ordinance 18-20. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Resolution 18-21, a resolution authorizing a reduction in force within the Town of Maryville's Public Works Department in all matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Usalak, second by Councilman Spann that we approve ordinance, I mean, Resolution 18-21. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. That concludes resolutions. At this time, BGA action. The first case number Z28E16-0818. It's, the petitioner is Edward and Sharice Muir. The owner is Yizeng, request for special exception approval to allow a church at 5460 Broadway. It's in a C2 community commercial. Petitioners are present. Please come forward. Staff report, please.
Petitioners are requesting special exception approval to allow a church to be located at 5416 Broadway in the C2 community commercial zoning district. The Fresh Wind Community Church was previously located at 7898 Tav Street. The church was leasing space for the First Presbyterian Church of Maryville. The congregation grew too large for the space that they were leasing. They relocated to the Plaza. The petitioner and the new owners of the Plaza were not aware of the zoning requirements of the C2 community commercial zoning district. The Fresh Wind Community Church will occupy the building on Sundays from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Wednesday evenings from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., and on Friday evenings for church meeting. The church has 60 members and 40 members who regularly attend the church. Attorney has a copy of the lease agreement. For this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only, this special exception approval will exist to the terms of the present lease agreement, which is three years.
Starting, when does, when did they sign the lease?
February.
Okay, so from February of this year, 2018.
Right, February 16, 2018.
And so it expires February of 2021.
I think the term on the lease, I think actually, the term started in March or April, Mr. President, because I remember reviewing this before. We should make our, if we're going to approve this, our accepting contingent on the contingencies that were adopted by the plan, or the BGA at that time, so.
Which was the attorney at the time, attorney you told that they could go April 1st?
I think it was either March 31st or April 1st, but it has to be three years from when you sign the lease to when the lease term ends. So the, the life of your lease is going to be the life of this special exception.
Okay. Do you agree with those terms?
Yes.
Okay. Because that, on April the 1st, 2021, you want to see the U-Haul people.
This is an extraordinary, extraordinary circumstance, which necessitated a deviation from our regular standards and procedures.
Well, some of, some of the folks besides Rich and I are new, but we remember this conversation we had with storefront churches. No offense, folks, you know, you signed it. Rich and I met with that, that owner of Broadway Plaza and had a long conversation with him.
Exactly. Actually, I was there, too, sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe was there, too. You're so quiet in those meetings, Joe, I forget you there. You're like a church mouse.
Yeah, I'm real quiet.
This is your ward, I mean.
Here's, here's my stance on this thing, that they, they entered into a lease that unbeknownst to them.
Right.
That they couldn't do it. And I think we had a conversation with the owner.
Yep.
So I'm sure that if we, if we were to reject this this evening, the owner would take them to court to get them to pay whatever they needed to pay to live up to their part of the agreement.
Plus, it's not only they're under a lease.
Right.
But they've also signed a personal guarantee on the lease, which would make these two individuals personally liable if the church wasn't able to.
So therefore, Councilman Pettit and for the other council, I, you know, I agree that we should approve this this evening and give them the opportunity to continue to move forward with their ministry, and with the understanding that, you know, in 2021, that they'll do something different. But I, I can't hold them responsible for, because they didn't fully understand it, because I'm sure that if they would have knew, then they wouldn't have done it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Usalak that we approve case number Z28E16-0818. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Case number Z29UV7-0818. Jade Construction is the petitioner. The owner is Husky Lake Acquisition 3 LLC. The request is a variance of use approval to allow indoor climate-controlled storage at 7880, 7890 Broadway. It's a zone C2 community commercial. Staff report, please.
Petitioner is requesting a variance of use approval to allow indoor climate-controlled storage in the C2 community commercial zoning district to be located at 7880, 7890 Broadway. The petitioner is proposing two buildings with indoor climate control with the units facing Broadway remaining retail. The tenants in both units will move to the units facing Broadway. Currently, the structures are 70% vacant. The exterior structures of the building will remain the same. Petitioner proposes approximately 333 storage units varying in sizes of 5 by 5 and 10 by 20. There will be onsite management Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and 24-hour access with keypad to storage units. The attorney has the purchase agreement for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only, and petitioner must install security cameras per town ordinance.
Any discussion? That's Sean?
Yeah, it's mine. Yep. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Spann that will approve case number Z29UV7-0818. Any further discussion?
I do have some.
Yes, sir.
Being a 24-hour storage facility, we heard Councilwoman Usalak earlier talk about lighting, especially with a 24-hour facility like this where people are going to be in and out. Is there going to be some kind of adequate lighting for the premises?
Yes.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Welcome. Case number Z30E17-0818. The petitioner is Shaver Preferred Motors, Inc. The owner is Barry Levine. The request is special exception approval to allow used car sales at 5713 Broadway, the zoning in C2 community commercial. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Everybody should have a rendering in front of them. Staff report, please.
Petitioner is seeking special exception approval to allow a used car dealership to be located at 5713 Broadway in a C2 community commercial zoning district. Petitioner owns the Jason property to the north and has for 20 years. The petitioner intends to purchase 5713 Broadway and improve the structure. Petitioner will demolish the structure that is at 5701 Broadway and expand the sales onto both properties. The intended use is a cleaner used car dealership for both properties. The proposed use for the building at 5713 Broadway is the sales office and a showroom for the cleaner, clean and ready cars to be displayed. The building is presently vacant due to the closing of Levine Tire. The proposed expansion of the car dealership will improve the exterior of the structure at 5713 Broadway. The hours of operation will remain the same, Monday to Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. No car repair will be done on the property, and the attorney has the lease agreement for this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, to Councilman Minchuck and Councilwoman Usalak's Uh, Mr. President, to Councilman Minchuck and Councilwoman Usalak's comments, since this is a renovation, Joe, can we put a condition that you will supply security cameras for the new ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
And lighting?
Lighting is part.
They're going to do light.
Lighting is part, yeah, for their inventory, right.
If you look at the rendering, there's not going to be adequate light.
Attorney Georgie, we, we've recently passed within the town a ordinance encouraging existing businesses and definitely mandating new businesses to install security cameras. The cost of these security cameras are not that great as compared to the value they give in terms of helping police solve investigations and keeping the community safe. We'd ask at this time that you accept that as a condition as to this project.
Yeah. I have not had that conversation with my client, but I would suggest that I feel comfortable accepting that condition. I'd be surprised if he wouldn't have been of the mind that he would do it anyway.
Certainly. And we understand it, but we just wanted to suggest that tonight since we're in discussion on it anyways.
Great. Any other discussion?
Yes. Are they having additional cars on this property? Additional used cars?
Correct. So right now, all the car sales are on the adjacent property to the north. What he would do is knock down the building that's there and use both lots for purposes of presenting cars. This building is much bigger, substantially bigger than the prior building.
Sure.
He's going to have an indoor showroom and a few cars on this property as well. But the existing property that he owns would still be used for the sale of cars as with this one.
Plus an office. Correct.
He actually has a little monopoly here. He owns the building on the northeast corner of 57th and Broadway where his corporate office is.
Okay.
This will have sales offices in it, but his corporate office will remain where it is. And he owns the property to the west, across the street where they do auto repair.
Thank you.
And they recent it for whatever it's, and so that you folks know, this is Joe D'Chenzo. He's with Chester. Not only is he a lawyer, he's also an architect, and he is the one that's put together the elevation. And Chester would be doing the improvements to the existing building. So to the extent that you had any questions about the structure, the lighting, or the landscape, Joe was kind enough to come this evening.
Anything else? Yo, it's my area again.
Yep.
You know, you know how we feel about, all of us feel about Broadway?
Yep.
And I think that this is an excellent opportunity. Levine Tire, you know, they've been there for a long time, and they just closed up shop. And we were wondering what was going to go there. And I think that this is an excellent opportunity. And I wasn't even aware that they, their corporate office was across the street at 50...
I noticed that.
Right. Yeah. In the 5600 block of Broadway there. And I just, I think that that's excellent also. Appreciate everything that, looking at this right here, I think it's going to be a win for the entire town of Maryville and especially the residents in the north end of town there. So we appreciate it and tell your group that we appreciate what they're doing. And the town is always here to assist them in their endeavor.
Thanks, Mr. Sean.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion, don't we?
Oh.
Make a motion.
I motion to approve.
Go on.
Second.
Okay, quit laughing, Doc. Motion by Councilwoman Barron, second by Councilman Minchuck, that we approve case number Z30E17-0818. Any further discussions? Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Welcome.
I guess the only thing I should leave you folks with is, we don't own the land yet, right? We are doing, this is part of our due diligence. One of the items that we needed to complete was, of course, getting the special exception so that we could sell the cars. We're still waiting on phase one environmental studies and other due diligence items. We're very optimistic that the sale is going to go forward, but this was hurdle number one.
Definitely an important hurdle to clear, so...
Right.
Certainly.
I'll follow up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Okay.
Uh...
And too.
Take care.
Case number Z31UV8-0818. Uh, petitioner Steve Laird. The owner is HPWS-V1, Maryville LLC, variance of use approval, LED electric message center, 1500 East 83rd Avenue, C3 Highway Commercial. Staff report.
Petitioner is seeking a variance of use approval to allow an electronic message center to be located in the C3 Highway Commercial zoning district. Petitioner is requesting a variance from Section 21-189.8 to allow a 49 square foot electronic message center onto a freestanding sign. The main sign will be 148.99 square feet, and the total signage will be 197.99 square feet. Petitioner would like to install the LED message center to help identify the Wood Spring Suites, which is now under construction. Petitioner feels that the building is not highly visible and that the LED sign will transmit information potential to hotel customers. Petitioners will promote town events when requested. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Span, Councilman Minchuck, second by Councilwoman Barron, that we approve case number Z31UV8-0818. Any discussion?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, this is in my neighborhood, literally. Um, one freestanding sign for a lot. Right now, you have a lot.
Yes, sir.
You're gonna, the Holiday is going to come back in and re-subdivide for future development?
Yes, we are.
Right now, you'd have to use that one sign for the whole development?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So you got to make sure those guys at Holiday understand that, that we need to subdivide that into...
They're going to be at the next workshop for tentative subdivision.
They are.
They are.
All right.
Return to the tentative subdivision.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Are you in relation to Jerry Laird?
Uh, yes, and Bill Laird.
That's my grandfather.
Wait. All right.
Okay, you guys can meet afterwards.
Tell Jerry.
Got you, okay. Whole new life I didn't know about. All right. Thank you all.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes BGA action. Any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Any public comment? Announcements. Town Hall will be closed with the exception of emergency services September the 3rd in observa, in observance of Labor Day. Stormwater Management Board meeting September the 4th, 2018, at 4:30. Plan Commission Workshop meeting September 4, 2018, at 6:30. The Police Commission meeting September the 7th, 2018, at 8 a.m. Next Town Council meeting is Tuesday at, well, we have a Town Council workshop, I'm sorry, at 5:30, September the 11th. And Redevelopment Commission meeting September 11th, 2018, at 6:15. And the next Town Council meeting will be September 11th, 2018, at 6:30.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Don't get in a hurry. Don't get in a hurry.